I will now call the February 17, 2015, Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would, stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those of you in attendance, to those that might listen to the audio at a later time. The next item is the Consent Agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I'll accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Sir Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quevel.
Aye.
Councilman Levise.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation. It's got proclamation, and we're going to have that too, but it's a presentation. We have a distinguished guest among us with a distinguished career with the city of Blue Springs, 35 years. As I thought about this, 35 years ago is when I first got involved in politics in Blue Springs as well. So Judge Jack, would you come up? And we are going to make this presentation.
I'm going to come down here with you.
We have a proclamation here for you. I'm only going to get into all these whereas, because we're going to whereas it. You want to whereas it, so go whereas it. Okay. Proclamation, Judge John Jack, whereas on Tuesday, February 17, 2015, Judge John Jack, J.J., is being recognized for his 35 years of superior and entertainment service as Blue Springs Municipal Court Judge. And whereas, J.J. graduated from University of Missouri with his law degree and was admitted to the Missouri bar in 1877, and appointed Blue Springs Municipal Judge in 1979. And whereas, J.J. also served as judge in the citizens of Lake Monawana, Rain Valley, Sidney, Levise, Buckner, as well as city prosecutor in Bates County, Bates City, in Long Island. Man, you get around, don't you? And whereas, in 1999, J.J. was the first judge to make national news over a high-belt pig. CNN covered the story of the pig's exile from Blue Springs due to exceeding the city's weight limit. And whereas, J.J. is known for his book of Maine's funny costumes, his morning walks down Southern Highway to get coffee, his cult of artwork, keen photographic eye, and his sense of humor, and is always good for stories, too. Whereas, J.J. is a judge who works tirelessly to go an extra mile as he sincerely cares about the well-being of the staff, every defendant or victim who enters the court. Now therefore, I caution all of the members of Blue Springs and the city council, congratulate Judge John Jack, a longtime friend, colleague, comedian, artist, and storyteller, on 35 years of service, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 17, 2015, as Judge John Jack, paid, and witness thereof, da-da-da-da-da. So congratulations on that. I peeked in at it, and I said, "I'm not sure I want to give you this or not." We have a service fee. And I guess I need to stick around 35 years, but this is how you know that.
Want to see it?
Yeah. Just in your eye. And two of them. Man, I want to see you wearing that. Do you want to put that on?
Sure.
Yeah, let's put that on, so everybody else can take place at that. There we go. About to blast me. I can get a medium, too, Captain. Oops.
Where's the drain on the shower?
That's the bait and switch.
Yeah. It's gone. I should have brought a man that I could have done a bait and switch on. Man, that's a chariot you got there, isn't it?
It's Kevlar.
Yeah, that's purty there. That looks good. Woo! That's nice. But anyway, hey, thank you so much for your service and thank you for your friendship through the years. You have that, and I'm certainly certain that you want to make some comments. They can probably hear you from here unless you want to go to the microphone. But you used to be in here anyway, and I'm going to keep that.
Here, give me a minute, if you can.
Yeah, you got it. Do we have a photographer that will take a picture?
Vicki's there.
Take it to the picture.
I'd take it less, as long as it looks young.
Done? All right. You have the floor.
I want to thank all of the management here. I'm especially thankful for Eric, for the cooperation I've gotten from him and the help there, along with Fred Sims.
Oh, Fred who?
Yeah, my dad told me growing up, if you find a job that you enjoy doing, you never work a day in your life. And I feel that for the last 35 years, I've had the best part-time job in the city of Blue Springs. I love what I do. I love the staff we've got and the people in our office that make the work. I'm especially proud of our bailiffs, who are here tonight, our prosecutors here tonight, my court probation officer who's here tonight, my court administrator, and that I got all four clerks. Okay. I also want to thank my wife and my daughters, who have put up. My wife's become a court widow of all of the nine courts I've got for the last 35 years. I've missed probably a lot of the school plays, a lot of the school activities. I've missed a lot of PTA meetings with student bottom touch. Again, I want to thank everybody involved. I appreciate working here. I love working here, and I appreciate the proclamation and the honor given me of serving the city of Blue Springs for this time period.
We're happy you're a part of the team. So anyway. And certainly, we thank all the court staff for coming out supporting you as well as your family. Next, we have a public hearing on the TIF, an Economic Development Incentive Annual Update. Mr. Johnson, who's going to handle that?
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form from Christine Cates, Assistant City Administrator, and notice of public hearing is advertised in the Examiner on February 3, 2015. That is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Ms. Cates.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Prior to starting tonight, I left a copy of the 2014 TIF annual report on your desk along with several audit reports that you'll get for the presentation about the audit. That is a report that we submit to the Department of Revenue at the state of Missouri each year, and we have a November 15 deadline. And then after all the audit information is done and the audit is completed, then we do this presentation and this update regarding TIFs. And then this year, we're also adding some economic development updates. This is the second annual update, and we've added, like I said, the other economic development incentives that have been approved during the last fiscal year, which was the 1314 fiscal year. These updates ensure compliance with state statutes that require an update every five years for each TIF. We're doing an annual update to make sure we get every TIF every year instead of just doing periodic meetings to catch them on their five-year anniversary. Several reports are prepared on an annual basis that include information about the city's TIF projects and other incentive programs. These reports include the TIF annual report in front of you, the two Adams Farm Bond update reports that we do each year, as well as the NID bond update reports, and also the MCRC Annual Performance Audit Report that appeared as part of the MCRC 353 abatement process. The guidance for this requirement of this public hearing is Section 99.965 of the Missouri Revised Statutes. The Department of Revenue compiles the TIF annual reports from all the cities and counties throughout the state, and a consolidated report is sent to the governor and the legislature. This is a copy of the 2014 report that was just released on February 1. Recently, the Department of Economic Development used to compile all of this information, and recently, the Department of Revenue took that over under executive order from the governor, and the process now is an online reporting process. And so each year, we go in and update all of the TIF reports. The 2014 report includes information about 294 projects, TIF projects throughout the state, reported by 91 municipalities. This report consolidates the data from across the state, but it doesn't provide any comparisons or benchmarking data. It's just information in their fore review. During the 1314 fiscal year, the city council approved three resolutions and three ordinances related to economic development incentives. In April of last year, the city began formalizing the White Oak TIF plan with the approval of a funding agreement and term sheet, along with a resolution setting forth the requirements for the potential use of eminent domain for the White Oak project. In June, the city council approved a resolution revising the Main Center Redevelopment Corporation 353 abatement policy. This was the third update to this policy. The changes in this version of the policy related to the requirement of bringing all incentive requests forward at the same time, and the policy was also adjusted to note that a property is eligible for multiple abatements, but the total abatement for all projects is limited to 25 years per property. Since the beginning of the Main Center Redevelopment Corporation abatement program, which started in 2001, there have been a total of 26 abatements approved with a value of 1.6 million, and some of these, 17 of these abatements have expired now. These numbers are tracked and reported in MCRC Annual Performance Report that is distributed to the city council on the taxing entities each year. Changes in property values and sales tax are also tracked as part of Downtown Alive's participation in the Missouri Main Street program. The three ordinances that were approved during the 1314 fiscal year include the Eighth and Ninth Amendment to the MCRC plan. The Eighth Amendment was for the Americas Community Bank approving an abatement of 236,000, and the Ninth amended plan was approved granting pizza shop an abatement for 325,000. These two projects represented an investment in downtown of over half a million dollars. In December of 2013, $800,000 in industrial revenue bonds were approved for Wall Street Partners, which was to prepare space to bring, exceligent to relocate their headquarters in Blue Springs, bringing a projected total of 350 jobs with plans for future expansion. This actually grants a tax abatement on the property for seven years. On the list of ordinances, the White Oak TIF project is not listed here because it was approved in the current fiscal year, the 1415 fiscal year. So you'll hear more about that next year. And also, since the beginning of the fiscal year, the city council approved an abatement to extend the property tax abatement for Heartland Financial for the university extension office, and that happened in October as well. For different projects and types of incentives, we track different measures of success and economic indicators. These different measures are contained in numerous different reports and tracking mechanisms. We are working to develop some standard economic impact measures for all incentive projects so that we can report on them in one report for the council each year and also track them over time. These measures will include assessed valuation, job creation and retention, sales taxes, and removal of light. With the addition of White Oak, there are six active TIFs in Blue Springs now. Last year, during this presentation, we gave a brief history of each TIF on its own page, and this year, we've consolidated that into one sheet so that you can see the six TIF districts all together and the amount of incentive approved for each one. Tax increment financing is limited to 23 years from the date of activation, and the activation date can be different than the plan date. A project must be approved within 10 years of the approval of the plan. Out of six TIFs and 13 project areas, all of the project areas are activated except for two, and those are two project areas in Witch Chapel that have not been activated yet. So the 23-year clock is ticking on all of those except for the two areas in Witch Chapel. This is an updated map of the TIF projects and project areas. This map is a map we put out on the city's website, and it's updated annually each year that shows the overlapping districts, the partials that are included, and where they're located within the city. And it also shows the different sales taxes, different sales tax rates for each TIF or TDD or CID district. There are a few things that we have upcoming that we're working on, just to give you an update on. The TIF plan redevelopment contract for White Oak were approved, but we're still working on the developer on the CID cooperative agreement that will be brought forward at an upcoming council meeting. We are currently working on the TIF revenue study the city council approved in January for the Adams Farm TIF area. We are putting together a schedule for that issuance now that would include refunding the two existing bond issues and also providing additional funds to reimburse the developer for project reimbursable costs. The primary goal of this bond issue is to remove the city's financial backing from the previous two bond issues. We anticipate a May closing date for these bonds. An application is also forthcoming for a 353 tax abatement on a property on South Outer Road for an indoor gun range. The funding agreement for this project has been drafted and is being reviewed by the developer. We are also in the process of reviewing a request from the Fall Creek CID to refinance the outstanding bonds. In recent years, the CID board has covered shortfalls in the bond payments due to the closing of Golden Corral and is requesting refinancing to make the remaining payments and to reimburse the board, the CID board. This request is in compliance with the TIF redevelopment agreement, and we hope to get that wrapped up before the next bond payment date, which is in August. If you have any questions about these, the projects discussed here, or would like any additional information, I can provide that way.
Before I ask the questions to make comments or ask questions, I want to remind everyone to turn on the microphones and speak into it so we can have a recording of that. Now, that being said, any comments or questions from the council for the record? Councilman Fowler.
Your Honor, this has got CID, TIF, 353, but one of the things that I guess, and maybe it's not an incentive, but the NID, we ever list status of that?
We don't typically include that in this report, but we certainly can to be able to provide updates to you. It's not an incentive to a developer. It was to provide the money for the construction, but the city oversaw.
Yep, yep. And another thing on the, maybe it's a part of an appendix or something like that, but when we show, you've got our open tests, we might want to show a log of our closed tests over time and the years that it actually took, because some we've paid down and got paid off early.
We do keep track of that, and we also have the when an abatement has expired or like a chapter 100, and we do compile that, and we can include that in a report to you as well.
Okay. Now, the comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak in support of, in support of, in opposition to? Opposition to? We will close this public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Cates, for that present, for your presentation on that. Next, we have a presentation by the Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Essman, you're going to give that?
Yes, I am, here.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks for having us. I'll address you tonight wearing three hats. One is an investor, representing the investment of my company in the Economic Development Corporation. Two is one of your city representatives on the EDC board, and finally, is the chairman of the board, which gives me the opportunity to speak tonight. This is our semi-annual report that fulfills a commitment that we've made to the city council to report out twice a year on the performance and projects that have to do with our activities. And first, I'd like to introduce Brian Starnar, our president, who's present this evening, Lyle Shaver, who's a past chair of the EDC board, as well as Chief Steve Westerman, who is the treasurer of our Board of Directors.
Vice Chair.
Sorry, Vice Chair. Next, I'd like to thank the city. This is the ninth year of your investment in the EDC, and as you're aware, just go back in history a little bit, it was 2004 that the city, members of the Chamber of Commerce, 25 business and civic leaders began to meet to explore ways to better support the growth and economic development for the city of Blue Springs. That led to an evolution and transition of economic development from the city-focused department based in the basement of City Hall from 1989 to 2005 into a public and private investor-based corporation. The mission, as you know, is to foster growth, development, and investment in Blue Springs that leads to enhanced quality of life, tax-based growth, and jobs through engaging local employers, EDC investing partners, business allies, and key stakeholder organizations working with the EDC and in collaboration with the city of Blue Springs. At the present time, the EDC board stands at 19 members, and just to remind you of the representation that the city has on this board, and I think it's important, that there are six city appointees, as well as six members that are elected by the investing members. Three seats additionally represent the Blue Springs Chamber of Commerce, the Blue Springs School District, and the Central Jackson County Fire Protection District. There are two non-voting seats that are representative of the Blue Springs Growth Initiative Zinks, and a past chairman of the Blue Springs Advisory Council, and also one council liaison position, Councilman Chris Levise. The EDC today is approximately 65 investing members. The total budget for the EDC at this point is approximately $500,000, with $179,000 coming from private investment, which represents about 35% of the total budget, which is a mixed investment model that's in line with similar organizations throughout the Kansas City area. In addition, the city benefits from the voice of 65 investor members that are interacting on a daily basis on behalf of the EDC with their membership and in their investment in our corporation. The EDC operates with three full-time staff positions. Brian Starnar, in the role as president, is focused on capacity, or building capacity that supports the growth, development, business retention in Blue Springs, business attraction, and major employee expansion, entrepreneurial initiatives, marketing, and promoting the city of Blue Springs. Cheryl Lopez, who's been with the EDC since the inception, and before that with the city of Blue Springs, is responsible for business and investor relations, relationships with the board, the city, investor relationships and investment, Grow Blue Springs program, the Blue Springs Spring Board activity and events, marketing, contract services, our annual meeting and investor events, along with the Blue Springs Growth Initiatives. Teresa Evans has recently gone to full-time with our staff, is our business outreach manager. Her responsibilities are business retention and expansion, workforce, job training, state regional allies representatives, small business support, Downtown Alive liaison. And through her work and business retention, I will talk about some opportunities that have come about that are generating more business opportunities with the city of Blue Springs. The executive board is composed of myself, representing the Adams Point Conference Center Courtyard by Marriott, as a city-appointed member of the Board of Directors, and as chairman. Chief Westerman as vice chairman. Ed Lawrence, who's with Ecto Development Company, is our treasurer. Kirk Sampson with the Blue Springs School District is our secretary. Lyle Shaver, immediate past chairman, and Mayor Carson Ross is a permanent seat on the executive board of directors. Other committees that do the work, and the volunteer side of the work for the Economic Development Corporation, demonstrate how the EDC is able to leverage our board members and community involvement to contribute to the goals and mission of the EDC. Those committees are, first, the Marketing and Membership Committee, which is fairly self-explanatory. Growth Visioning, which is a task force that helps to assess and make recommendations for growth and development needs, strategies, and resources to support the capacity of Blue Springs employers. Blue Springs Growth Initiative, which is formerly known as MIP. This is a 501(c)(3) corporation whose mission is to be the resource to support tools and resources that bring opportunities for capacity of business growth and development. Sources of investment include the city, KC P&amp;L, Blue Springs EDC for MIP Real Estate, EDA Planning Grant, and More Partners, which has been funded through the city. The next committee is our Grow Blue Springs organization. Grow Blue Springs is a committee that is involved in promoting and developing sustainable programs and resources to foster and bring attention to local entrepreneurship, business startups, small business support, programs in collaboration with local students, which we've really expanded those programs to the Blue Springs School District, as well as to employers in the Blue Springs area. A new committee that was active this year was our Empower Awards. This was a recognition program focused on growth and development outcomes, which gave out awards to businesses and civic leaders in the area of economic development. And finally, the most recent committee that's been added is called Propel Blue Springs. This newest committee is now an organization that will help support and assist Teresa Evans with opening doors, sharing leads of local employers to visit, and members of our board and members of our organization are reaching out with Teresa to local businesses for retention and expansion efforts. It's been very successful. Now, if I may transition to what you're probably most interested in hearing about, that is the activities and some of the successes and things we're working on at this point. There are currently six active local employers that we've identified through business retention and communication that are being assisted with retention, expansion, and growth projects. These six existing employer projects represent approximately 1,500 jobs retained in the Blue Springs area, project growth and net new jobs of over 1,300, an estimated project payroll of over $120 million additional dollars to our city, projected new job payroll of $78 million, projected new investment at $111 million. In addition to that, we have one new employer project that's not a current Blue Springs business. When that grows out, it's an estimated additional $25 million investment in our community, an estimated 75 to 100 new jobs, and an estimated new payroll of 4.1 to 5.5 million dollars. So that's going to be a real success in our community. I have a couple of pages of more statistics, current data on Blue Springs businesses and EDC activity, which we will be happy to answer questions. We'd be happy to make those available to you via email if you're interested in having some numbers sent your way as well. And we'd be happy also to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions, or Mr. Essman, by the council? Any questions? Seeing none, I suppose you did a fantastic job explaining it to us.
Thank you very much for having us.
So anyway, thank you for coming for the presentation, and thank the other members that are here. Next, we have an audit presentation by Mr. Kevin Smith from McLeodry LLP. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here representing McLeodry. We are the external auditing firm for the city. Every year, the city is required to have an annual audit, the purpose of which is really twofold. One is to look at the financial activity of the city and the financial reporting to make sure they're in line with the accounting standards that exist for governmental entities. Also, we look at compliance with federal grant programs. So there's certain grants that we test each year as required by the federal government and report on compliance with those grants. So I've got, there's a lot of information that you have in your material. One is the large comprehensive annual financial report, which is otherwise known as the CAFR. That's what takes up the most of the pages in your material. And then there's a couple other deliverables as well. There's a separately issued compliance report, and then I've got a brief presentation that sort of outlines the entire audit process and gives you the results of both of those audits. Excuse me. The first slide here, you'll see a letter in your material that is some required communication that we're to make to the city council at the end of the audit process. That document does indicate that we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. So on pages one and two of the CAFR, you'll see McLeodry's opinion. And as I mentioned, the term that we accountants use is unmodified, but that does mean a clean opinion. That is the highest level of opinion that we can give on the That is the highest level of opinion that we can give on the financial statements. And just to mention as well, this document is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association. That is not a requirement that every entity submit that to that organization, but they have a certificate of achievement program that entities can submit the CAFR and it gets graded based on the information that it contains in the CAFR. So it has a higher level of transparency and additional information that goes beyond that minimum requirement. So you'll see that the certificate is included in the CAFR from the 2013 financial statements and the city does intend to submit the 2014 financial statements as well. So I do congratulate the city on submitting that and getting that award for 2013 and we would expect to receive that award again in 2014. This slide here just runs through that required communication that I mentioned. This would indicate any significant issues that came up as a part of the audit process. If there were any significant disagreements with management or any other significant issues, we would have notified you in that letter and I'm pleased to report there are none to report. There was just one audit adjustment that came up as a part of the audit process. Karen and Christine and her group do a great job of getting ready for the auditors, preparing the financial records. So when we come out, we are, you know, actually performing the audit and not doing the bookkeeping for the city. This slide here discusses the results of the compliance audit. I mentioned that part of the audit is looking at federal grant programs and also looking at internal controls as they relate to your financial statements. So that first bullet there just notes that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over financial reporting that were reported this year. And also, as far as the single audit goes, are the federal grant programs, there were two programs that we tested this year, the CDBG grant and then the Woods Chapel Road Construction Grant that were received by the city. So this accounted for about 47% of the federal grant funding of the city in 2014 and neither of those programs had any compliance findings reported. Also, no internal control deficiencies as it relates to compliance were reported. The next couple of slides have some of the financial results from fiscal year 2014. A great place to go in the CAFR, it starts on page 89 of that document. That's the statistical section that gives a lot of, a 10-year history of the financial records of the city and also has some non-financial information about the city in the back in that section as well. So that's a great place to go to if you do want that longer-term perspective. The next few slides are going to focus on the general fund and the results from 2014. As you can see, the general fund receives most of their revenue sources from taxes. About 65% of the total revenue of the general fund is from taxes. So that's about $26.1 million is what was the total revenue of the general fund in 2014, which is about a 3% decrease from last year. Most of the areas that you see there, the different funding sources remained relatively consistent between 2013 and 2014. You'll see a slight drop-off in the charges for services and some of that has to do with the change in the ambulance billings that occurred in 2013. There's going to be a decrease in revenue from the general fund, but there'll also be a corresponding decrease in the expenditures that you'll see on the next slide. So the first full year that that was taking place was fiscal year 14. That's why you see that drop there. So then the next slide shows the expenditures of the general fund by function. The largest function that the general fund supports is the public safety function and that's where you'll see that decrease in the expenditures there from that change in the ambulance billings that occurred in 2013. So overall expenditures decreased from $24.2 million to $23.7 million, so about a 2.3% decrease in overall expenditures. The majority of the functional expenditures have remained relatively consistent, really since 2008. You can see the eight-year history there and most of the areas and the functions have remained relatively consistent. And this slide shows the fund balance by category. So the categories that you see off to the right, those are, indicate the level of spending restrictions on the fund balance. And so you've got from top to bottom, you know, the most restrictive categories down to the bottom, which is the unassigned category of fund balance. So the items in blue and red, you know, those are things that are either not in spendable form or they're restricted by external parties that you can't change the use of that fund balance. But the remaining sections of fund balance can be changed either by council changing an ordinance and moving funds, the purpose of funds to a different area, or management in that assigned function or that assigned area can change what that fund balance is earmarked for. The fund balance of the general fund decreased from about $17.3 million to $15.5 million in 2014. The majority of that is a $2 million transfer that occurred from the general fund to the public safety fund to help fund the cost for the new public safety facility. So that's the main reason that you see that decrease in the general fund from 2013. And the big, the orange area there, that committed area, that's where the city has the budget stabilization and the emergency reserves recorded. This slide shows the legal debt margin of the city. This is, the blue area though shows the assessed value of the property within the city. So you've got about $731 million of assessed value, which the debt limit is then capped at 20% of that assessed value. So there's about, that orange bar there shows what the debt limit is and the difference between what you've got outstanding for your debt compared to that debt limit is your legal debt margin. So you've got, you know, well over $100 million of legal debt margin, meaning that that's legally how much more debt could be issued before reaching that limit. The next slide shows the results, the operating results of the enterprise funds for the city. So this includes the water, sewer and golf. Shows operating revenue and operating expenses. You'll see an increase there in revenue and expenses. It's mainly attributable to the water fund. The activity in the other funds remained relatively consistent, but mostly the increases you'll see are due to changes and rate increases within the water fund. And in 2014, you'll see that there was positive cash flows from operations for all of the enterprise funds where there was a shortfall in 2013. So that is trending in the right direction. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to go into anything in more detail or answer any questions that you have.
Okay, are there any questions by council? Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. You mentioned our legal debt at $123 million. I think it's page 101. Our total debt, government debt, is $151 million. So, I mean, to suggest that we aren't, don't have a lot of debt relative to the legal debt, I think that's a little misleading when you look at our total debt being $151 million versus a legal debt of $123.
Right. And that legal debt margin, there's only certain types of debt that go, that get factored into that, into that calculation. So the general obligation debt of the city is really what's looked at in that legal debt margin perspective, but any of those special obligation bonds, TIF bonds, things like that are not included in that calculation.
Yeah.
So you're correct, that's not meant to reflect your total debt.
Yeah, total debt, from 2005, it was $21 million. Today, it's $151 million, so $130 million growth since 2005. That's about a sevenfold increase. That's a lot of debt to be carrying forward. Some of that is voter-approved. I think the last time I looked, the majority of it was still not voter-approved.
Mr. Essman?
We probably picked up on this earlier tonight when Christine Kates was making her presentation on the TIF report. We are hopeful that with the revenue study that we're currently conducting with RED Development and Adams Area Landing, that in May, we're going to be able to bring forward a proposal to you to refund and refinance those first two bond issues that related to that project. When that occurs, you'll see that debt be reduced substantially.
I'd love to make that motion if I could.
When we get to that point, well...
Just getting us started, all right?
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
And Ms. Kates, we'll be, what number, once we get this recognition, probably about 50?
A lot.
Yeah, a lot. That's a good answer.
Yeah.
A lot. Which means I want to thank the finance department because you guys, you do a good job. You make us proud. Next, we have the introduction of reading of Bill, a reading of substitute number one of Bill 4359.
Our introduction, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of substitute number one, Bill number 4359, amending sections 260.110 and 700.030 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to permit onsite waste disposal systems when certain criteria is met.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Called in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full same side?
Second reading of substitute Bill number 4359, amending sections 260.110 and 700.030 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to permit onsite waste disposal systems when certain criteria is met.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesque?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4533.
That brings us to merril announcements. I have two tonight. First, Eloise and I want to express our deep and sincere appreciation for all the concern and support we received yesterday after our accident. The outcome could have been much different, but by the grace of God. So we just want to thank you. The next one is on a happy, oh, and by the way, I went to see Big Red today. I think Big Red is done.
Oh.
Been a part of the family for 16 years, but I don't think you're going to see Big Red again. So anyway, for those that don't know, Big Red is my truck I've had for 16 years with 404,000 miles on it. So it's been a, it's been a good family member, so, but it's time for it to take its place wherever vehicles go. And I just put new tires on it. But anyway, on a happy note, Councilman Jeff Quabell and Wanda are proud grandparents of James. So anyway, we want to congratulate you and your grandparents. And so where is James?
James is with our youngest daughter, Ashley, and her husband, Adam, who live in Grain Valley.
Grain Valley. We got to start working to get him here in Blue Springs.
Yes, we've been working on it.
Good, good, good deal. That concludes that part. Now we're going to go Thos to the Panda and this ends the month of February, which in the month of February, I always try to come up with a quote with someone that made significant contributions from the African-American community. Tonight comes from Booker T. Washington, and I'm sure most of you have heard of Booker T. And I quote, "Success is to be measured not so much by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles which has overcome, he has overcome while trying to succeed." End quote. Next, we go to our city attorney, Ms. Yendez.
Thank you, Mayor. An appropriate motion at this time would be, I move that this body go into a closed session pursuant to section 610.021, subpar paragraphs 1, 2, 3, 9 and 12, revised statutes of Missouri, for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its attorney and communications relating to legal action, causes of actions or litigation involving this body and legal advice and discussions regarding real estate transactions relating to personnel pertaining to negotiation of contracts and for preparation discussions including work product relating to negotiations with employee groups. Salute.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
If I could, please.
Oh, you're not done?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And that this body stand adjourned at the conclusion of said session.
That's what I thought you were going to say there.
I'll move again.
Okay, move it again.
Second again.
Second it again. Any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levesque?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to reconvene in the East Conference Room, the East Conference